Okay, we're ready.
I call this meeting of the Lancaster County Planning Commission to order. It's a Clerk Wood, would you read? If anybody answers, I'm gonna get mad.
Okay, you started this, click this. That starts a new recording. Okay, now we're ready.
Are we ready? Let's start over. I call this meeting of the Lancaster County Planning Commission to order. Would you please, Clerk, call the roll?
Chairman Dees?
Here.
Judy Anna Tinklinburg?
Here.
Sheila Henson? Jason Cavalier?
Here.
Shelley Richards? And Alan Patterson?
Here.
We have a quorum.
Thank you. I ask that the Clerk make a note of the record that a quorum of the Planning Commission is present. The public notice of the meeting, including the meeting agenda, has been published and posted to required length of time in the lobby of the county administration building and on the county website. And the news media was informed of the time and place of the meeting. I want to thank all of you for being here. We've got one out sick and one empty chair that I feel reasonably sure will be filled shortly after the first of the year, I hope. And at this time, I don't know, I think I recall asking someone to do the pledge. Maybe I did not in the workshop. If not, I'll do it. My most kind and gracious heavenly Father, great architect of the universe, the giver of all good gifts and graces, we gather together here this afternoon to do our best to do what is required for our county. We have become one of the finest and best counties, the fastest-growing counties in the nation and in the state. And we've done that with your help, and we continue with your blessing. In thy name we pray. Amen. Commissioners, you have before you the agenda for tonight's meeting. Do I hear a motion?
Motion to approve.
Second it.
Motion and a second to approve, all in favor? Any opposed? None. Motion is passed unanimously. Now comes time for citizens' comments. We have one email from Kelly Berger. I believe that's attached to everyone's agenda. And no one else has signed to speak tonight, so we will move on. The next item is approval of the minutes for the November 2024 regular meeting. Your motion.
Motion to approve.
Have a motion to approve.
Second.
And a second, all in favor? Thank you, unanimous. And the minutes for the December 5, 2024 workshop.
I make a motion to approve.
Second.
Motion and a second to approve, all in favor? I vote "thank you" is unanimous. The next item is our public hearing items. First is rezoning, 2024, 2459, Eng, the Linwood Drive, Mr. Matthew.
I think you need to click on the PowerPoint, yes. Awesome, thank you. All right, starting off with an overview for this rezoning. It's located at 1972 Linwood Drive. It's a .849 acre parcel. The intent is to remodel the existing structure as a residence, currently zoned general business. The proposal's for medium-density residential. Here are two location photos of the site, the first on the left being an aerial view of the subject property at the corner of Shelton Street and Linwood Drive. And on the right is the ground view of the parcel off Linwood Drive. A little bit of parcel history here in background. The existing structure is currently vacant. It's adjacent to an existing neighborhood, residential neighborhood along Shelton Street and Jubilee Lane. The property is accessed off a driveway off Shelton Street. The property was formerly zoned residential and was rezoned to commercial back in 2016, along with several other properties surrounding it. Prior to 2016, the parcel was zoned R-15, which is residential. So the proposed zoning is consistent with the adjacent use types and the comprehensive plan, which its future land use category is neighborhood. It also meets the comprehensive plan goal, Greater Lancaster 1.4, which encourages renovation and redevelopment of existing housing stock. The nearby adjacent zoning districts are manufactured housing, general business, medium-density residential, and general business again. Staff recommends approval. I'm available for any questions. I believe the applicant was going to make it, but not sure if they're here tonight.
Any questions for staff? Hearing none, thank you, Mr. Blasey.
Thank you.
Call this case into public hearing. I want a sign to speak to this, so we will consider ourselves out of the public hearing. Commissioners, you have before you rezoning 2024, 2459, Eng and Linwood Drive. Do I hear a motion?
Make a motion to approve.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Hearing none. Can we have a roll call vote, please?
Sheila Henson? She's not here. Judy Anna Tinklinburg?
Or.
Shelley Richards?
Or.
Jason Cavalier?
Or.
Alan Patterson?
Or.
Chairman Dees?
Or. Motion to approve passes by a vote of five to zero. The next item is text amendment, 2024, 2368, Thomas Retreat Center use. Ms. Allison?
Yes, sir. I'd like to start by making an announcement that there is an error on the staff report in the history. On the first page of the applicant, of the staff report, it says in the 2023 BZA summary that the BZA reviewed a request for special exception and denied the request. The BZA actually reviewed and approved the special exception, but later the applicant came forward asking to amend the campground to allow cabins, and that was not approved. The applicant is here tonight, Adam Thomas, and he is interested in developing a religious retreat center oriented toward youth and family activities. Part of the reason Mr. Thomas is here is because there is nothing in the code currently that would allow for the type of use that he would like to plan on his property. As you can see from the history, he's been working on this for a while. This is the latest iteration of it that has been made with previous lessons learned. To give you an overview of where the application would apply if it is approved, the map on the left, do you have handouts at the desk? Would you please pass those around? You did, thank you. So the map shows the AR and RR zones on the map. There are two AR and, or excuse me, two RR zones north of Van Wick, and those are identified on the map as well, two existing neighborhoods, one on Henry Harris Road and one in Peaceview. That's to say that this, because this would be allowed in the AR or RR zones does not necessarily mean it would be allowed on those pieces of property, because we're making, the applicant has asked for several conditions to be put in place before this type of use is allowed. And so anybody wanting this type of use would have to meet those criteria. Does that make sense so far? Okay, the picture on the right is the applicant's drawing or rendering of what they're looking at currently. You see a large building that would be an event facility and the main building of the site and then potentially cabins along the internal road. The proposal, I tried to summarize it into a chart, because I'm a chart girl, I love my charts, but it is written in text in your handout. If you'd like to go through each one of those piece by piece, we can do that. I also have a shorter list of places where staff had recommended changes or amendments to that. But essentially, the applicant is asking for a minimum of 20 acres in this particular type of use. Principal uses would include those that are, that are part and parcel of a retreat facility. A retreat could be done a single end day or in residence, kitchen and dining area to feed those that are in residence, wedding, meeting, event, or worship space, a general meeting or event space on the, or a building on the site, of course bathrooms, management accommodations, spa services, and recreational uses would be those that would be principally available to people attending an event on the site. Accessory uses would be those that are supporting of those principal uses, waste management, shower, bathhouses or showers, coin-operated laundry, equipment rentals, maintenance facilities, and associated retail. Some of these are issue, are ones that when we did the review of other jurisdictions, they show up frequently in those jurisdictions, especially those jurisdictions that have organized retreat areas like a KOA or a family campground or an RV park that has specific utilities and specific amenities in that site. So these, this did not come out to be a list of things that was not found in other jurisdictions. The restriction includes, the accessory uses would not be visible from the adjacent street. There would be no direct access to any of the residential cabins or the lodge from the main road. Staff has requested edit on that to make sure we understand what that means. The facility entrance would be safe and convenient traffic movement. The setbacks are proposed at 30-foot front, 50-foot side yard, and 30-foot rear with 10-foot separation between the cabins. The maximum density would be two cabins or lodges per acre. We also have discussion on that. Minimum open space at 40%. The road standards would meet the fire code of an all-weather surface. The road design would have adequate turnaround. The parking would be used the same materials as roads. The building code reference would be the IBC, and the site's planned specifics are in the proposal. The place where staff had comments about this or concerns are highlighted there, especially on the accessory uses and associated retail. The goal for associated retail as part of an event facility or a retreat or a recreational facility is that it doesn't become a convenient store for the neighborhood. It is specifically targeted toward those folks that are staying on-site, and we wanted to make sure that there's wording in there that says it must be incidental to the use and not a primary use of the event facility. If you think about when you've been to cabin places or cookout places or, or parks, places with family where they have a little convenience store that's geared toward that event, or if you've ever been to Disney World with Frontierland or the Frontier Wilderness Cabin Retreat, the stores there are not something that you pull off the highway and go to particularly. They're there for the people that are staying at that facility. Direct access to main road from cabins and lodges. We propose that we change the word "main" to "public," so that we are specific that direct access to the internal buildings are not available to a public street. We don't want anyone in the future to have a piece of property that has a long frontage along a existing public road and then try and connect their cabins directly to that. We don't want people pulling off the road directly into a cabin parking lot. This is supposed to be a contained area. A retreat facility typically has a boundary, a border, a buffer, and the events happen internal to that off of a private circulation path or street. So we wanted to say that public street would not be accessible. Technically, the roads inside the, the facility would be private streets. That's why we didn't say public or private, because they have to have some kind of access off of the internal circulation. If you'd like that to be differently worded, we can do that. We recommended that the front and the rear yard setbacks also go to 50 feet. The setbacks for the RR and AR zones are relatively, are related to the ones that are recommended here, but the accessory buildings in the AR and RR for the neighboring properties, it's only a five-foot setback. So we propose that we expand the setbacks within the development that's proposed in order to make sure that there is a 50-foot buffer around the perimeter from any adjacent properties. For the density, proposed two cabins or lodges per acre. On further thought, cabin and lodge can be the same thing, but it could also be a cabin where you stay and a lodge where you have meetings, or a lodge where you have dinners, or a lodge of that like. So we propose to better define cabin and lodge as it was used or an alternative method. We asked for one lodge per project and two cabins per acre, and this, I believe the applicant has different thoughts on that, and that's totally fine. He'll tell you his ideas. With a minimum open space, we wanted to bump it up to 50% so that half of the project would be in open space. The site's planned specifics, we wanted to add to the list of what you're required to have, to add acres of open space on the application, so it's easy for us to identify where it is and isn't met. And then change the numbering of each, it said lot, but we're not, these kind of facilities are not subdivided out into different lots typically. You will have a, a building or you'll have sites, so we asked for that to be changed from lot to site, so that there's no confusion that this may be something that could be a subdivision later on. Off-site parking requirements were not provided in a number. We took the number that is currently used for places of assembly at one per 80 square feet of the main assembly hall and recommended that, plus one per cabin. And then for buffer requirements, we recommended referring to Section 714 for parking lot landscaping, which is required where there's a parking lot, and to require a Type B buffer yard, which is meant to have some opacity between the uses to provide that extra space. In a lot of these kind of facilities, you will have natural woods in the area of the buffer. That would be sufficient if there was opacity observed by the staff that are doing the review at the time. If it's not opaque enough, then they could require additional plantings in that 50-foot section. In other jurisdictions that we looked at, there are lots of places, but they don't all call it the same thing. So what we did was we looked for other jurisdictions that had cabin allowances. I particularly looked for areas that had KOA campgrounds or retreats, Christian retreats, Girl Scout retreats, Boy Scout retreats, and the like. Boy Scout retreats didn't have cabins, so that got out the door, because they all have the, the tents on the, on the, on the floor. But Aiken County, Berkeley, Charleston, Ori, Lawrence, Pickens, Richland, and York all had something that allows for a cabin-type environment. They called it different things, they had different minimums, but all of them pretty much had some kind of setback from the adjacent properties. Not all of them had parking minimums. A lot of the counties that we've looked at don't have a lot of parking minimums for recreation in general. So that's something that we've taken into account and we're talking about as part of the UDO rewrite. And then some other jurisdictional points, Aiken County has a maximum of 12 campsites per acre in their camp and RV park. Berkeley County, 25% of the site is dedicated to recreation. Ori County requires a park plan, which requires, you know, who's on-site, who's the management, who's the emergency contact, and the like. A good idea, especially in the area where you have hurricanes as a frequent event. Pickens County allows four cabins per acre, and York County also required an operations plan. So this is just a collection of all the different communities that we looked at when evaluating what do other communities or other counties do. So I'm available for questions, and the applicant is here to make his presentation to you as well, or to discuss it with you.
Questions? Cavalier?
Is there any? I'm, I'm, my, my first takeaway on this is that it's, it's, it's trying to create something new inside the UDO?
Yes, sir.
Is there a better use of this as amending any of our existing requirements for a campground that would have features that could identify it as more of a retreat-type center, as opposed to just tents and even RV hookups?
The applicant did attempt that first beforehand and was not successful in that. There are some regulations in our campground section of the, the UDO that requires a distance from bathhouses to the campsites. There's a minimum number of campsites. You have to have other things in place that are a little bit more than what you would need with a cabin, because with a tent, you need, you know, the ability to go out and get fresh water. At a hookup somewhere, you need to be able, distance from the bathrooms and the like. In a cabin, you would have a bathroom and a water source inside the building. So it became, it wasn't as good a fit as originally thought.
Too much crossover?
Yes, sir. I also don't think the cab, campground allowed for an event space.
Another question to that, is that the idea of a cabin or a lodge, what stood this, what's to distinguish between a cabin or a lodge versus just plopping a tiny home down, as we'd had other discussions around what building standards would require versus what we allow in certain zonings?
So that's part of why staff recommended we put a definition of a cabin and a lodge in with this section and define the cabin as the, the sleeping space and lodge as a meeting place, which could also have accommodations. In a cabin, I know the applicant has had more discussion with the building codes folks than I have directly, but a cabin has the ability to have sleeping and bathroom facilities without having to have a full kitchen. With a tiny home, you are required to have everything that a home would have, including a kitchen, bathroom, sleeping quarters, and the like, and there's a maximum size for that before it becomes an actual home. The, as I understand it from the applicant, the intent is that this will be a sleepaway camp, camp kind of cabin. Nothing very special, just something for you to gather at the end of the day, sleep, get up, wash, and then head out to do your events for the rest of the day. You can ask him directly about, you know, how that's planned, but that was, what was the intent for this type of event facility. If it gets beyond that, one of the things that we also recommended, I didn't say, I didn't say clearly, is that we recommend that we take out the section where it says it'll relate to the IBC or the National Building Code and let the building code fall where it does. I'm not quite sure what all the different levels of the residential code and the building code are, but if we took out the reference to the IBC, then it could fall wherever, under whatever category that the building official would say once he looks at the plans.
And that actually leads right up to my next question. Is there like a maximum or minimum square foot requirement to validate whether it's a cabin, lodge, tiny home, etc.?
There are, there are requirements under the building code that after a certain amount of space or a certain amount of people, that's built, that it's built up to, you require sprinkler systems and the like. That will play in no matter what we say in the zoning code. And so that's part of why, after some thinking, I thought maybe we should just suggest doing away with the reference to the building code and let it fall where it does.
Another thing that I'm always concerned with when I see these type of things is a water impact in the area, that they do tend to be prone to being next to a creek. It's a natural amenity that adds value to what you're trying to do. And for what I hear as the intent would seem like an obvious thing, that I didn't see it on the example site plan that was put up, but for a general requirement that we usually have a buffer set up for any, any water features, especially intermittent-type creeks or whatever the other one is, I'm drawing a blank on the name right now, I'm sorry.
That's okay, the intermittent creeks and the waters of the US and the waters of the state. If it is something that Lancaster County Water Sewer Division has a purview over, they already have a buffer required, but we can definitely add in an additional buffer if you'd like on the creeks and streams. This particular unit, or this particular proposal, there is a lake on the adjacent property. I don't believe, I don't remember if there's a lake actually within the 20 acres as proposed. You'll need to talk to Mr. Thomas about that. But you're right, that water activities are popular with, with camps, especially those that are geared toward children in the summer. And you, you have a very good point about the buffer.
And one last one, if you don't mind, please. In addition to regular parking spots that you would associate as an account or, you know, some type of parking account that goes along with the, the site design, this type of use would be prone to large vehicles coming in, not necessarily RVs, but like buses and, delivery-type vehicles, that they have a heavier impact on the area, especially the road, on turning radiuses, et cetera. I think that would be beneficial to consider, especially on the debate of a private or public road is really going to generate a different approach.
Regardless of whether the road is public or private, the fire marshal will require there to be a turnaround at one end, or at least at one point, where the fire trucks, the ladder trucks and the like can get around. There are current standards that we have that we're pulling into the UDO from the fire code. I think it's like an 88-foot roundabout or an 80-foot roundabout, and then a particular T, the T intersection that you see at the end of that drive is, with the proper measurements, that would meet a turnaround requirement. But I take your point very, very well, that you could easily see churches or scout groups dropping off a bunch of people by bus, and they would need to be, have a safe place to turn around.
Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you, sir.
I still think some of these definitions are a little overlapped and muddled, because there's something, a, a big difference between, in my mind, between a retreat and a wedding or event venue. So, you know, try, because like you're talking about coin-operated laundry, rental needs, you know, that's more of an avenue, not a retreat site-type center. I mean, typically, if you're on a retreat, you're not there long enough to need to wash your clothes and stuff. I know they'd have to have facilities for like washing their internal stuff, but I still see some, some kind of crossover, so I think we need to get this more, more defined as to what is and isn't allowed, so that, like I said, the impact that a, a wedding would have... is and isn't allowed, so that, like I said, the impact that a wedding would have versus a church group coming for a retreat are very, very different.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Harden. The, if this were to go forward, is there any requirement for the cabins to be ADA compliant? Would that fall under building?
I believe that that comes along with the building code, but I can ask that of our building official.
Since this is in, would be in AR or RR, those zones, if I'm not mistaken, by right can be mobile home. Mobile homes can be in those, is that correct?
Yes.
So would the cabins be able to be modular? Would there be a requirement for stick-built or?
That's a very good question. That's a very, very good question that I don't have the answer for at this time. If at the end of this discussion with the applicant, you want to continue it to the next month so we can get some answers back to you, I could definitely get that. Thank you for that.
And we'll, it's hard for me to tell with this mock-up, which I'll thank the applicant for presenting, this is very helpful to have this right now. Is the parking, off-street parking proposed at the cabin itself, or is there a central parking lot that people would walk to the cabins?
It's not indicated in the text, so at this point, there would not be a requirement for it to be at each space.
I'm just, where my mind is, I'm thinking, there's a big difference if, you know, like to Jay's point, you know, the size of the cabins. If you're talking about a cabin that's for couples retreat, that's a one-bedroom, one-bathroom, then, okay, 10-foot apart may be adequate. But if you're talking about a cabin that would how, I mean, I go way back, way, way back to McCall RA camp, and those cabins, you know, there'd be 20 people in there. Well, that's a whole different animal as far as parking, logistics, and also setback. Much larger cabins, and, you know, I know the facilities would be scaled, but if there's parking at the cabins, I don't know that 10-foot apart would be adequate, and I could see there being some, based on this mock-up, be some congestion that could impede first responders if there ever was a need to gain access. I can't, I can't tell the width of the road, but if somebody comes in late, parks on the side of the road, and the fire department has to be called, I mean, we hate to think about worst-case scenarios, but unfortunately, you know, in these situations, we, you know, we should think about those. The, my last question or concern is, there's no mention in here as far as, there's mention of the retail needs or, you know, complimentary services, things like that, but there's not a, you know, the retreat centers that I've been to in my life, they've had an onsite nurse or an onsite, something like that. If that's not the case, what kind of, what burden will this place on our first responders potentially in this, not in just this area, but in also other areas in the county that this could be applicable?
That's a good point, thank you. Yes, ma'am.
I'd like to comment on that. I don't know how we would put it in there, but I mean, like for Girl Scouts, you're required to have one Level One first-aider if you have above so many people, and then you have to have, like I was always the Level One, Level Two first-aiders, so I got to go on lots of camping trips because I met that criteria. But like I said, that's, that's kind of that gray line, is that code, or is that what he has to have for his business plan? And so maybe we make it a requirement for the business plan, like you said, to make sure the people are safe.
I'll also mention that when I was reviewing this, I was reviewing it not just from what would it be here in Lancaster County, but for what something else is available too. A couple of years ago, I spent two weeks at a retreat that was not encumenical, it was health and wellness-based. And they did use, and it's in North Carolina, and North Carolina exempted cabins from the building code, but they did use tiny homes as individual cabins for people, and the parking spaces were out front off of the internal road. You could park there, but most of the time that you were traversing throughout the campsite, you were walking, because the other spaces did not have parking spaces. There were no parking spaces in front of the, in front of the natitere, and there was no parking in front of the dining hall. There was parking in front of the main lodge. There's no parking at the, tragically at the spa building where you get your massages, you had to walk up and walk back with weak legs. But it was, it was something that was used to help propel the health journey.
Yes.
To encourage the walking. Now, the applicant has not mentioned anything about health and wellness. This is more for, you know, he'll tell you his vision, but in running that back, none of those streets were paved. They were using the fire roads so that the rainwater, there wasn't a lot of runoff into the natural areas. They were near a creek and a waterfall, and there were buffers and safety measures in those places. And there was staff onsite that knew first aid and physical therapy for those people that would have needed it. So I take your points clearly.
Thank you. Anyone else? Thank you, Ms. Harden.
Thank you.
I understand the applicant is here.
Yes, sir.
Thomas? Just state your name and address for the record, please.
Adam Thomas, 2878 Kendallwood Drive, Lancaster, South Carolina, 29720.
Okay, I need to swear you in. I need to swear you in?
No, no, that's not, that's easy.
Oh.
Thank you, sir. Ready?
So first, thank you for considering this request. I don't know if I can follow up much on what Ms. Harden said. That was pretty thorough and pretty complete. After receiving feedback from this group and the staff here, our family has spent more than the past year in prayer and meeting with other counties, entities, individuals, nonprofits. And as Ms. Harden said, we believe we've located a land use that is not currently included in the UDO. It seems that the proposal provides a win-win for both the county and for land users, and that win-win would be that the solution, while you had mentioned a strain possibly on the waters or possibly on our healthcare workers, it definitely does not add a strain to our school system, as opposed to if someone was deciding they needed to sell and a developer moves in. It also offers minimal development, impact and infrastructure on existing large parcels of property, so that we can keep the feel of nature and what is so beautiful here in Lancaster, to keep that true. As Ms. Harden said, I'm proposing a new land use to AR and RR that would be referred to as Retreat Center. She went over in full thorough detail the suggestions. There were several questions. Again, most of the things as we wrote and reviewed and submitted, we were thinking not the specifics of our project, but understanding that if you approve this, this is something that is being approved for the county. And that as Ms. Harden said, if somebody wanted to open, say, Wellness Retreat for some other situation, they still have to follow in these rules. So as you said, Ms. Richards, yes, I don't see having a laundromat at all on our property. There's several things that I don't see, but I could, also, I would love to get a massage, but we won't offer a spa. But I could see possibly you on your property opening some type of therapy center that does offer spa. And so as we wrote it, we were writing it thinking big picture as opposed to just me, myself, and I, and what we're looking forward to. But I am here to answer any questions that you would either have on our intentions on our property and/or, I wrote down some notes of some things that you'd ask, and I don't know how much of this meeting is specific to our property project versus the proposal for a new land use to the UDO, but I'm happy to answer any questions I can.
Mr. Thomas, I don't have any questions. I do have one. I've heard ADA compliance mentioned, and if I count correctly, there's about 12, 13 cabins proposed on that plan that you've got there.
Yes, sir.
I'm using, and I know Ms. Allison is going to check with building and zoning, but I'm using some older building experience that I used to have. And if I'm correct, and I may be wrong, I've been wrong before, that one out of every 10 units had to be ADA compliant. I might be wrong with that. If so, if I'm right, that would require two ADA units, is that correct?
Yes, sir, if you're correct. If you are correct on those current numbers, as I've spoken with the building department, I was told that I need to have an ADA unit, and he didn't say, but we're fine having multiple. The way that they're laid out, that's going to be, that won't be an issue in our situation. But again, he said that they determine that in the building department. That's not anything that I get to give input on.
That determination. I'm just wanting to make sure that you have got that parked in your mind because it will come up.
Yes, sir. And again, that is our, as you look at that plan on our property, that is kind of our vision of years of big picture. You know, initially, it may be two or three cabins, and it may be two or three cabins for four, five, six, seven years. You know, there's a proposed dining hall. You know, initially, that event venue, I think that was one of the questions that, regarding her spreadsheet, is that, you know, that the lodge not be considered, if we end up saying there's only one lodge. I refer to that big rectangle building as the event venue, the activity center, the worship space. That's what I'm referring it to. I understand in your world, everything is semantics, so we can call it a tomato, but it does not have a cooking kitchen. It is not, we're not doing that there. It's not a cooking kitchen. Down the road, we can see there need to be in the future, as more cabins are built and there's more of a demand, that we would need to have a full dining hall to feed multiple people, and there would be a cooking kitchen there. And so I just wouldn't, I would prefer that we don't call the dining hall a lodge if we're going to go back and say there can only be one lodge on a facility. In my mind, anything I've ever attended, a lodge is somewhere people stay, and maybe it's a meeting space in the middle and it has some bedrooms off of it. Meeting with the building officials here in the county, a lodge is actually determined as having up to five bedrooms that sleeps up to 10 people, and the dining hall would sleep no people. So I would just propose that a dining hall is not considered a lodge.
Mr. Patterson? I'll ask the similar question, because even though it's applicable to your particular site, I think it also translates to future sites also.
Yes, sir.
So when I ask, it's not for you, but you're the applicant, you're asking for this, so you get to field it. You know, as far as the, as far as the parking, would you see centralized parking? Would you see parking at each cabin? And staying with our terminology that Ms. Harden started, you know, I think we should consider the lodge as the main meeting space and the cabins as the overnight spaces. I think that's what I heard her say. So would there be parking at each cabin? Would there be central parking and then people walk to the cabins?
Yes, so in our, in our proposal, there is parking by the lodge, the event venue, and then above what is the proposed dining hall, that's about a half acre to an acre of property there, that is as far as we would allow church vans or groups to go park. And then you would unload, and then we would load up on ATVs, people's stuff, and then we would drive it down and deliver. So there are, you have your concerns, which are valid, great points. I don't want vehicles going up and down that part of the property. It's like vehicles come to a certain point, and then from there on, they're there to encounter creation, and we want minimal disturbance. And I don't want a bunch of vehicles on our property. Once you get past the dining hall, there'd be no vehicles, there'd be ATVs. So there's a square above the first cabin. That, in that square, it says proposed dining hall, and that would be very future. And so between going up towards where that curve is, it's a healthy piece of property that's right there that we'd be able to park. In our situation, plenty of vehicles, that's where vans would unload, and then...
All the parking would be centralized.
Yes, sir.
Parking cabin side.
No, sir. Very fair to say that, yes. Regarding the comment on buses, I would expect that the fire marshal's requirement for his truck meets any concern for the bus, because most, the fire truck has to put out his landing gear and everything. So I feel we're probably going to be meeting that by what the fire marshal requires us to do.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Mr. Thomas, the, I'm assuming that V3 is an engineering firm or et cetera, landscape, architect, surveyor that you've engaged on this? I'm just not familiar with them directly. I, not having a scale with me, ruler, to actually take off on this, I kind of wonder how they came to this layout without any actual requirements from the UDO that we have. I understand you're trying to instill this. So having a site plan developed without any requirements that are actually outstanding kind of makes me wonder where it's going to go next. Let's say like your distance between buildings, between your cabins.
Well, the starting point of this, as it was mentioned earlier, was it started out, the idea, I felt very similar to you did, that there was a lot of crossover for a campground, which is how we got here a year and a half ago. And before this council to put cabins implemented for reasons, that was voted down. So we backed off away from the campground, but we had already developed based on what the campground requirements were initially when things were surveyed. And then we basically took our, these suggestions on setbacks, et cetera, and created the site plan off of those setbacks, except when we created, when it says 10 feet, we went ahead and went to 25 feet. Because in your suggestion, you know, I'm not concerned about the cars, because I'm not letting cars, but I want to put picnic tables in between and let kids play cornhole and stuff in between cabins, so that those are small meeting spaces between cabins. And so, you know, where maybe campground required five feet, and then Ms. Harden said 10 feet, that diagram is actually at 25 feet.
Yeah, don't take me wrong. I appreciate what you're really trying to do. There is need for these type of things around the community. I'm just trying to get a feel here. This is my first run with this.
Yeah, so, yeah, we basically, I mean, it's, I'm not a developer. It's my first run, and I just know the Lord's given us a vision for kids to encounter Him on this property. And so we just, we take the feedback and we go, and we constantly, you know, I feel at times we're spending money that shouldn't be spent. It's really hard to raise money just to create a drawing or to do something, but, you know, this is the Lord's journey, it's not ours, and so we just get to, we get to go along for the ride. But based off of these, that is where they came up with all of the measurements and the setbacks. And then following up on this meeting, if this is approved, if there's any suggestions that Ms. Harden made that you agree with, then we will tell them to tweak the numbers if needed. But we've tried to already plan ahead, that if we're asking for X, let's go ahead and put in Z, so we don't have to keep paying over and over and over again.
I understand. Thanks.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I just wanted to say thank you for providing the conceptual plan, that it definitely helps visually communicate your idea and what you're going for, so thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Thomas. Thank you, sir.
Yes, sir, thank you. Yes, sir. Thank you.
It's now time for this item to be in public hearing. No one is signed to speak to this, so we will consider ourselves out of public hearing. Commissioners, you have before you text amendment. Let me get the right number. 2024, 2368 Thomas Retreat Center. Do I hear a motion?
Yes, sir, Mr. Chair. Given, given the number of questions we've had and to give staff some additional time to get some information for, for this body, I'd like to make a motion to continue this to the Planning Commission's January meeting. I don't have that date on me, but...
21st.
January 21st meeting.
Continue.
Continue until the January 21st Planning Commission meeting.
Second that motion.
Have a motion and a second to continue until January 21, 2025. Any discussion? Yes, ma'am.
Would it be okay if I go back over my notes to make sure that what we, what you're looking for when we come back, to make sure I don't miss something? So in my notes, I have a note that the definition about cabin lodge or tiny home, that needs to be discussed and settled out in the, in the proposal, to add a buffer for water areas, creeks and lakes and rivers that will protect the water side. There is some overlap between event venue and wedding that Ms. Richards had some questions about coin operation laundry needed at a retreat. So what I might ask the applicant to sit down with me and do is to lay out what would make his vision currently work and what would be future, future uses so that if you want to, if you're not comfortable with one of the future potential uses, then we could strike that off the list and someone could come back and request that at a later time if they needed it. I also have the question about, is there a requirement for cabins to be ADA required? I just looked up the code. The I-1 lodging category is the one that Mr. Dees was referring to, where 10% of all lodging has to be ADA compliant. If he had 10 cabins, one cabin, if he had 12 cabins, he'd have to have two cabins to meet that. Would cabins be able to be modular or manufactured home? It's definitely a question that we need to answer and, and clear up there. The road width requirements, we left it as a fire road, but we'll be able to bring back to you what the exact measurement would be from the fire marshal. There was no mention of onsite emergency care or first aid. Would that be something that we would want to require in a business plan that would be an additional to this? And that the central parking, identifying the areas of central parking and separating them from the cabin areas, if you'd like to have that as a requirement, we can make that as part of the language. The applicant certainly does not want random driving past the cabins, and I can understand that. We can write that into the code. And then to just better word some of the requests that I put out so that we can definitely hit the mark with the applicant's intention, but not overshoot the runway. Is there anything else?
I heard just, I'm confused, or I don't know that it's conflict, but the applicant mentioned that the lodge would actually be, his definition of a lodge or the definition that he had been given of a lodge would actually, could actually be overnight stays versus what I've read here, it would not be overnight stays. So I, just some clarity on that, I think would help us out.
And dining hall versus lodge versus main building?
Right.
You know, how are we going to, how is the best way to generally define it?
Right.
So that it meets that need plus different needs and other points of the county.
Yes. Thank you.
Oh, no, sir. I was, I had my apologies. Anyone else? And we will go from discussion to a vote. Do we have a roll call vote? The motion is to continue until January 21, 2025.
Judy Anna Tinklinburg?
Or.
Shelley Richards?
Or.
Jason Cavalier?
Or.
Alan Patterson?
Or.
And Charles Dees?
Motion to continue is passed by a vote of 5 to 0. This will be on the agenda for January 21, 2025. Next item is the Kershaw annexations. Ms. April Williams.
Good evening. Tonight, we have another standard Kershaw annexation. This one is for Ms. Seeger's to annex her property at 535 West Richland Street. It's the same as all the others. It's just an administrative process that we are doing, the public hearing for the town of Kershaw. Your decision on this annexation will then be sent back to Kershaw, and they will have it at their town council meeting. This is a photo of the property and a map to where it is. You can see on the right side picture that the property is contiguous to Kershaw property already, so it is 100% annexation that fits the requirements. It's zoned for the county as RR, and it'll be residential when it gets over to Kershaw as well. That's all I have. If y'all have any questions.
Questions? Thank you, Ms. Williams. Okay. Of course, there's no one here from Kershaw tonight, so we will consider it. Now call this into public hearing, but no one is signed to speak to this, so we will consider ourselves out of public hearing. Commissioners, you have before you, excuse me, annexation, Kershaw, at 535 West Richland Street. Do I hear a motion?
Motion approved.
Second.
Motion and a second to approve. Any discussion? Hearing none. Can we have a roll call, please?
Judy Anna Tinklinburg?
Or.
Shelley Richards?
Or.
Jason Cavalier?
Or.
Alan Patterson?
Or.
Charles Dees?
Or.
Motion passes 5 to 0. This will go back to Kershaw Town Council. Next item is new road name, 2024, 2548 Buttercup Lane. Jennifer Brown.
Good evening, commissioners. First item is 2024, 2284 Buttercup Lane. Application by Stephen Ebersol. He requests a name for a private drive. They recently subdivided family property there, and in order to pull building permits, now that they have three lots, they're going to need to get the private driveway named. There is an existing home at where the little cutout is on the right. I don't know if you can see that. So that's the existing home. This is a photograph of that, and the red line on the map shows where the driveway comes off the nearest road. Staff recommends approval.
And no one is here to speak to this.
There is no hearing required on this for new road names.
Pardon me?
No hearings are required for new road names. The applicant is not here, but this is...
Saying, I always ask them if they're here. Does anyone have any questions? Hearing none. Thank you, Ms. Brown. Commissioners, you have before you, new road name, Buttercup Lane. Do I hear a motion?
Motion to approve.
Thank you, Ms. Richard.
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Cavalier. Any discussion? Hearing none. Can we have a roll call, please?
Judy Anna Tinklinburg?
Or.
Shelley Richards?
Or.
Jason Cavalier?
Or.
Alan Patterson?
Or.
And Charles Dees?
Or.
Motion passes 5 to 0. And this ends here. Next item is new road names, 2024, 2572, December group, submitted from Ms. Sandra Burton, 911.
Okay. This list of names was submitted on the Eagles Landing preliminary plat, which is still under review. Will be coming back to you in January, but in preparation and in hope for it being approved, they have to get road names approved. There are four roads on the plat. One of them was already named on a prior plat because it's a connection to the existing neighborhood next to it. So it's just the three names on Sandra's list, which are Talon Ridge Drive, Wingspan Drive, and Eagles View Court. Staff recommends approval.
Any questions? Thank you, Ms. Brown. Commissioners, you have before you, new road names, submitted group for December from Ms. Sandra Burton, 911. Do I hear a motion?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. Did it be approved? Can we have a roll?
Judy Anna Tinklinburg?
Or.
Shelley Richards?
Or.
Jason Cavalier?
Or.
Alan Patterson?
Or.
And Charles Dees?
Or.
Motion passes about 5 to 0. And that will be the end of that. Okay. We've done well. We've gotten through an almost a record time, but not quite. We did beat that one. Does anyone else have any comments? Do you have another one? Because I'm not aware of it.
This is under review of next month's agenda. So for next month, we have a large group for a group, a place called Crestwind. They're requesting a development agreement. They're asking for a comp plan, future land use amendment, and three rezonings to go along with their master, basically master plan development. We'll, Eagles Landing for Edgewater will be coming back for the preliminary plat. It's under review, their revision is under review. We have a rezoning for 39 acres on Waxaw Highway. We have one more Kershaw annexation. We have the continuation of tonight's text amendment for the retreat center, and there will be one new road name, again, a private drive.
Very good. Very good. The, the one that was continued, if we could, let's move it to the first thing on...
First item.
It's unusual, but believe it or not, we've had one, two, and three, seven cases tonight, and they were all passed by 0. Unusual. What, what, what?
End of the year where I'll have the Christmas spirit.
Does anyone else have anything?
Should do the honors. Alan?
I know.
To adjourn, it's your last...
I'd like to make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
Who said it was that? You gonna let him off with it? We have a motion and a second to adjourn. All in favor?
Aye.
Now you can do it, just off the record. This one is totally, you have to have all your success.